Please stand in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just remind everybody, this is a work session, it's a non-voting. And no action will be take place, so. Wouldn't you have a lady we want to add?
Boy, Mayor, could we add to the agenda some discussion of the youth services agreement, which was in our Dropbox or our Drive or whatever, and we have a representative here, Casey, who can speak to it with.
Sounds good.
Maybe just see.
Yeah, I see, okay. All right. First is Mayor and Council update. Councilman Larson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just a few things to go over here tonight. For anybody that has went out to the landfill here this last week, I understand that they were supposed to do a trial run on the two-way scale house. And I suppose to have both scales operating, I've not heard how that's went, but you know, in theory, it looks pretty, pretty good and but it's all put together and should be, should be operating just fine. Dewboys facility is, is working, they got the new scale in up there and they're working on sand drops. With the solid waste disposal, things are going, going very well. Lotra is doing the, the last minute operations that they need to be doing in preparation for the, the rodeo on the fourth and things are looking good there and at the Lander Community Foundation Board meeting, things are, are looking really good for the, for the race on the fourth, so I think that and what I hear on the fireworks, everything else, I think we're gonna have a Fourth of July this year. So that's good. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman White.
Thank you, Mayor. A few things, Lander Senior Center had their primary fundraiser and raffle seemed to go quite well, they had over fifty items that folks could, they had a silent auction for. I was lucky winner of a Ted McDonald ring, pretty psyched about that. What to say, congrats to Johnny Culo for his amazing efforts at Olympic trials, absolutely impressive, that was really neat. That's so impressive, and two swim offs, wow. Planning Commission did not meet because we didn't have a forum, so we'll meet July 2nd instead. And we got a nice note from the YO-131 gravel event. And the success of last year's lift award was to help them advertise. And as a result of that advertisement, since participants plan their schedules of what events they're gonna do months in advance, they were able to advertise this and they're on track to double last year's record attendance, so they're pretty psyched about that, and that's a great example of you know, what, what those dollars do, especially in support of primary dollar events, so that's really neat to see. And then lastly, on the implements, we're continuing to go really strong with the twice-a-day implements. And there's, twice-a-day have been put onto the United platform through September at this point, so folks can plan travel into the fall, and so we're psyched about that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Councilman Hahn. Thank you, Mayor. I would like to see if we can, I'd like to readdress the Lander Cemetery changes and fees and the perpetual care that I was talking about. And I believe it's from 2012. But what I'd like to do is I'd like to get that back on the, on, on the docket in the near future and, and maybe we can it sounds like we need, we could do a little bit of work on this. I think some of this, it, it, I don't, it just doesn't seem fair to me, so anyway, that's what I would like to do, I'd like to bring that back up and maybe can address that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and I would echo Culo's performance. What a testament to our community and just, you know, what we, the type of individuals that are participating, I don't know if you were able to listen to the interview, but you know, he talked about that second race off, I know this isn't really city business, but he talked about the second race that he had to do. And you, you could really argue that they probably should have done that the following day, and it's a pretty serious situation. And, or a lot at stake. And Johnny Culo said, you know, basically that it was his fault, he didn't prepare appropriately and just really hats off to him and a lot of, you know, just a lot of integrity in that sentiment, like that's my responsibility, not anybody else, so that was really cool, you know, representing Lander in the, in our country and and all of those great things. I would also talk a little bit about Fremont County School District number one. I think if you will notice, a lot of, there's a lot of hiring that's happening with the school district, and I think that one thing that happens with the hiring for school district number one is a lack of housing. And so I know that we've addressed this, and I know that Councilwoman White has been working diligently on it for years, not just her, but others as well. It definitely needs to be addressed, and I, I would hope that like, having these things back on an agenda, that we could at least have some more discussion, more formalized discussion about how we can participate in that and what, if anything, we as a council could support. We just can't get people to move here because there's no affordable housing, attainable housing. Attainable. So I would like that to, I know that you've said it before, and I'm just jumping on that bandwagon as well, just as it pains to anything as far as recruiting new teachers. You look at the salaries, approximately forty-nine thousand dollars a year to start. And you're looking at anywhere from rentals from twelve hundred dollars to I don't know, twenty-seven hundred, making forty-eight thousand dollars a year, you're not gonna do that. It's not attainable, so we do need to diligently be investing in some ideas and solutions as it, as it relates to that. Lita, we'll meet tomorrow. We do have new members coming on board, that's very exciting. And I won't tell you who they are just yet because I don't know. I'll let you know after tomorrow's meeting, I don't wanna misspeak and if somebody was going to and then ends up not or whatever, so I don't wanna put the cart before the horse, and then Lyft also is recruiting board members. One position's available, so just be aware, you know, buddy that might be interested. That's all I have.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Stew.
Thank you, Mayor. Two items for me tonight, because we had a little discussion at the last meeting about the balloon release that would be happening as part of suicide awareness ceremony during the I just wanted to follow up, I think some council members got some updates, but I'll share more broadly that Anne even, sounds like she had extensive conversation carried forward, the idea of not using balloons or looking at alternatives, you know, there's probably a lot of strong feelings from folks on both sides of this issue. So congrats and thank you to Anne for purposing the city and tackling that conversation. Ultimately, where the subcommittee landed was on using the balloons still, but offering an alternative or option or I hope encouragement for participants to not release them. But to walk with them and use them as a symbol of awareness and remembrance, but not let them go. Probably not during issue, so. I'm sorry. Well, if you don't let them go, perhaps they would end up more in a trash can in a tree. So that's the, that's the conclusion to that conversation that we had. And then, Mayor, I have some questions and observations about the soccer fields, the pathway systems around the high school and Baldwin Elementary, which might be best suited when we do discuss the lease or the, is it MOU or a lease with the school district? When are we doing that?
It's, it's a lease.
Is that coming up on a work session soon? I thought we were around this time going to have a conversation.
Go ahead, Regine.
Yeah, that was part of my updates. We sent our suggestions to the school, the school sent us back some suggestions, so they have to go through their lawyer one more time, it will be on the school board agenda on July sixteenth, so we won't be able to vote on it this month. But if you have any comments or questions, I'd be happy to take them to the rest of the city staff and the school board.
So does that process, so they'll vote on it on the sixteenth, and then we will vote on it in our next regular business meeting?
Yeah, we could vote on it on the ninth in our next regular meeting if I get their comments back, where they're saying, okay, this is how we've addressed your city comments, so it's actually an agreement that they crafted. So it's in their hands to make sure that it's revised.
Well, then the two observations I made that Mayor might not be pertinent to bring into that conversation, um one is around trash pickup, so it looks to me like the city does, I'm sorry, the school does the maintenance on like the soccer fields and the grass field, is that, you're shaking your head, is it city staff who do the mowing and the watering and the maintenance?
It depends on which soccer fields.
Okay, great.
So the front two off of Baldwin Creek are now school maintained, not city leased. The small ones on the side and the back are, are city maintained and city operated.
Okay, of course, it's gonna be complicated. Well, I've just observed there's a lot of trash that gets caught up in that fence, you know, west winds, lots of trash coming off the soccer fields on both the small ones and the ones right off Baldwin, so I wondered about whose responsibility that was. And yes, it would, you know.
Okay, yeah.
And whoever's doing maintenance.
But that's good to know, because we have two volunteer groups that are looking for just a one-hour job, I think I could put that on that to clean up the soccer fields.
That would be great. Okay. And then my other question was on maintenance responsibilities for the pathway, that I think it's called JB's Loop that goes down past the bike park on the opposite side of the fence by the creek.
That is city.
That is city, okay, great. That bridge, which I suspect is probably like an Eagle Scouts project at one point, is getting a little in disrepair. I think it's structurally sound, but it looks questionable to some of our older walkers who cross it.
Don't jump.
That speaks to me constantly.
Don't jump on that.
Don't jump on it, and watch that one board that's clearly coming up, so I don't know, it's, I don't think it's high priority or urgency, even if that's city maintenance, can you flag that? Or I can even land it. Thank you so much. I'll just reach out to them, you know, your plate is full, I can, I can reach out. Mayor, thank you so much, that's all I have.
Thank goodness.
Thanks. Well, hang on a minute then.
Councilman Day. Thank you.
I've got nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. No. No, my turn. Just real quick, I wanna congratulate the Councilman Anne Home on his retirement from the state, so good job, Anne. So. Now he's on to the, no, you want a speech? So congratulations. And then, just real quick, we got an award from the Wind River Job Corps, it's Community Partnership Award to the city of Lander. So, and then even, and then we accepted this for us last Friday. So that was a good thing. Yep, thanks to the staff, working with them. So, good job. And then, real quick, if a balloon does escape their wax balloons, so they are by degree. I had to look it all up myself, too. So whether, like I said, I just wanna put that out. But I don't know what you've been doing on the Fourth of July, balloons going up all the time. Don't tackle on my project. So, you're fine. So anyway, on that note, we'll move on. Staff reports. Chief?
I don't have a whole lot. We got the Fourth of July all lined up and ready to go, so that'll be fun come next week. Besides that, it's just being in, end of the fiscal year stuff, it's a mess right now trying to clean everything up, so that's all I got unless you have questions.
You have questions? Been busy week. Regine?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as you know, we had advertisements up for tree board positions. A, a lot of response, both from the people that came in and presented to you and people we've never heard from before, so a lot of response on that. The way we've decided to do that is we have a lot of conflicting ordinances and resolutions, and if you have questions, Adam can speak to that. So I think when the tree board is formed, they can elect some rules and regulations, and then we would repeal or make ordinances to match the mission of that board. That's where we're heading. So it's not a fast thing, it's nothing that by July first, we're gonna have a tree board. But I think we're heading in the direction you guys directed for re-implementing a tree board. The other thing is the, we've been wondering what to do with the old chamber building, the depot building down there. We are now in a process where DEQ will give us a free assessment for Brown's Field. So where it used to be on a railroad and it has a lot of nineteen oh six unapproved construction materials in it right now. We've asked if DEQ would add us to their Brown's Field list for economic redevelopment project. So the first phase of that is they will hire, DEQ will hire a contractor, a planning firm, which happens to be Ayers and Associates. And we will get a report for Phase One and environmental habits, and then we'll get our environmental hazards, and then we'll get a plan forward, what could this building be? And that would open us up for grant funding if we wanted to redevelop that. So that's exciting, credit. I'll just add to John's solid waste announcements that hazardous waste day this year is July twentieth. It is in Riverton. So the city usually donates to that, a lot of other cities and municipalities donate staff. We donate some dollars to that every year, but a great event, a one-day free event to get rid of your hazardous waste, like paints, pesticides, those kinds of things from your properties. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. You want another minute?
Yeah.
Yes, you may.
Thank you, Mayor. Regine, that's, I will say, awesome on the DEQ brownfields, I've been to some presentations about that program and you know, where they feature some of other projects around the state they've worked on, it's pretty exciting, so that's, I'm thrilled to hear that. And a really important building and a cool spot that I'd love to see some good reuse for if we can. So, just, yeah, very exciting, which reminded me though, when you said Ayers Associates, can you give us a status update on master planning? And like focus groups and when we can expect more public
Right, and I can only do very high level because Anne is in charge of that project, but they will be in town in July. It's, they're doing a number of events, more like our open house event. And then they're also attending some specific coffee clubs and focus groups. I want to say they're the third week in July, so they'll be here for two or three days on that, getting public comments.
So we'll be advertising those dates around June soonish.
Correct.
Thank you.
I have nothing to report tonight, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
If you have any questions. No, Michelle?
We have started to advertise for the Parks and Rec director position. The priority review date will be August first for that, and I do have one applicant that's applied already. Lori Eckhart has helped me place that on the Wyoming Parks forum, so trying to widen the scope of who might see that. We have a robust summer staff that's out there doing parks and rec and mosquito spraying and things of that nature helping in the cemetery, and I think this is more seasonal staff than, than I've seen since I've been on. I'm trying to think of, of other things that may be coming your way, but there's just a lot going on, does anyone have any questions for me? Okay.
Councilman Larson?
Sorry, I'd seen the email regarding the mandatory drug what was it, inauguration or?
Drug and alcohol training?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Is that something that we need to attend?
No, it's not something the council needs to attend, if you'd like to, you're certainly welcome to. That is a requirement yearly of our drug and alcohol program for workers' comp discounts and things of that nature, but you're certainly more than welcome. I have changed the location from the community center to this courtroom so that I can record it. We do have a few employees that are otherwise engaged, and it's a mandatory thing, so rather than asking Captain Wa, who is going to do it for us, to do it twice. We're going to record it, so those employees then can gather together and sign in and, and watch it again. After the employee all meeting, then there's another hour for supervisors that goes more into recognition and things of that nature that supervisors would need to know. And also, thank you for reminding me, Councilmember Larson, I often get teased because I say I have nothing, and then I have something which leads to something like if you give a mouse the clicky, right? Tomorrow is the employee appreciation lunch. We have ordered Indian tacos from the Shoshone Rose Casino, we'll have cookies and soda for all the employees, it's at the North Park Kiwanis Shelter, so please join us if you can.
Okay, any questions? All right, moving on. The new business discussion is Resolution thirteen eighty-eight discussing creating a semi-quint centennial. No, I can't say it once fast. Then converting the tricentennial grant funds for that again, committee use.
The semi-quint.
Semi-quint. Rachel.
So this, this project was spearheaded by Shari, who is conveniently not here today, she had a, an appointment she needed to go to. So I told her I would do my best to convey her thoughts, and she also asked me to draft your, the resolution that you see in your packet also, which I so Shari attended a meeting, she's on the WAM board, things of that nature, and found out that the state of Wyoming is becoming involved in the nationwide semi-quint centennial celebration, which is coming up in two years. She knew that the city of Lander had had a bicentennial Lander Celebration Committee that put some funds into a CD and set forth some parameters for use of those funds for the tricentennial Wyoming State Celebration. She felt like that, because that would be in the year twenty seventy-six, that was pretty far down the road. And the state was asking for every municipality or certainly county level to participate in their celebration to, to bring Wyoming history to the forefront and celebrate it, educate people about it. So her thought was to ask the council if we could take those funds, create a semi-quint centennial committee according to the outline and the parameters that the tricentennial thought would be, and that they could go ahead then and apply for other funding opportunities under this umbrella and have the celebration of history and, and things of that nature sooner, and then perhaps, you know, go from there and put money aside to do another celebration in another fifty years. So that is sort of the, the gist of the ask there or the request or the thought behind, behind the semi-quint centennial committee task force and release of the tricentennial funds to be used for the semi-quint centennial celebration. Clear as mud?
Go ahead, and that mountain's
So basically, we want to celebrate, we want to celebrate the United States birthday fifty years sooner than we would celebrate their three-hundred-year anniversary of the state of Wyoming.
Councilman Larson?
That didn't help, Adam's telling me that didn't help.
Just, just one question there is what, what's in that fund?
A one thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars. And there's a couple odd cents, but I left that on my desk, but.
So we'll just have to forego, we squander everything here in the next two years.
We might not have a tricentennial fund. But there are apparently funding opportunities from the state level for the semi-quint celebration. So potentially, there could be funds to put into a CD for the next fifty years to grow and, and be available for the next committee.
So if anybody had any flashes in on what, what they want to do on this semi-quint?
I know nothing about that, I just picked up Shari's request and tried to run with it. I wasn't at that meeting, I apologize.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of questions after reading this document in our packet. So the amount is fourteen, one thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars. And it's currently not growing very quickly.
It was nine hundred, so it has gained some.
It's gained some, okay. Nineteen seventy-six. I am, as I read this, what a document, by the way. It's really cool and the language is good, and there was definitely some forward thinking when it was written. Clearly, because it, you know, the language is like on or before. And just some of that really necessary language for something that was written so long ago, but anyway. I, I'm a little reluctant to use the funding personally, because I feel like we could probably scrape together some funds through the city to support the semi-quint centennial event that the state would have, I think that's an important event, I think that we could all get behind that, and I don't think fourteen hundred dollars is would make or break, and it would be really cool if that fund, that funding, that original funding as it sits now could be used for the intended purpose for our tricentennial celebration in fifty years. Now, the problem is, is how are we gonna make sure that information, because I'm not gonna be up here when this happens?
When what happens? The tricentennial or the tricentennial?
We're not gonna be here as city, well, maybe, I mean, I don't anticipate.
Chance is the, the probability.
That's right, that's right, so my question would be how then as a council do we ensure that that information is passed on? I mean, that's for Shari to know that this half, this was in existence and, and there, and how did she know?
I am unsure of that answer. Other than she's the bookkeeper and probably sees the statements that come through and, and notices, and, and not just a bookkeeper, that's not what I mean, she's the treasurer.
Yeah, right.
So she accounts for all the funds and would have that on the books and, and know that. My guess is that's how, and the bank where it was originally deposited is no longer.
Right, that's what I was
It's been, you know, a, and that bank, I mean, there's a long story, we could go into the history, which is, Regine would, would get on this, it is just fascinating, because there's supposed to be a time capsule. Perhaps somewhere there and
Where was this document located?
In the back file room.
And scanned in, so it doesn't exist?
It's scanned in now.
Now.
But to answer your question, one nice feature of the air table program that's being built is, is some of this redundancy, right? You could go in, now in fifty years, I don't know what the computer language is going to look like. But certainly in five years, it, it's very possible for someone to go in and enter that, and it will be on the, you know, it would be in there to say, you know, check on it or form a committee or something of that nature, but it could be a directive of the semi-quint committee, should council decide to go forward to that extent and, and create that committee to, you know, make sure that some of this information is, is preserved. Oh, that's right. It's another pitch, to be honest, for digital archiving, which is also on my list for for things to do, but we have a lot of really cool old ordinances and minutes and things of that nature, talk about a walk down history lane to read some of those things, that I would love to get archived, but they need to be digitally captured appropriately in order to send them to the state archives so that we can preserve all of this type of
You know, and I guess that's my other, just thinking quickly, is you know, the English language and how we write and how we document events hasn't changed a whole lot, I mean, if you read this document in its entirety, it would be fairly similar to what we would write today. What is different is how we capture it and how we store it. You were able to go find a hard copy and scan it in, and if we go completely digital, that won't be available anymore. And so I am a little bit like, I wonder what this looks like, and not that, to digress, but it does feel to me like this is a very important event to Lander. It's something that's historical and, and should be captured in a way that, that is able to articulate that and you know, something that we could be very proud of, but my concern would be we'd get lost in the fifty years until the date, but anyway, I, I wouldn't, I would struggle to spend that funding for another event when we could really keep it all together in a time capsule, maybe we put this in the time capsule, I don't know, but it's interesting.
I am happy to redraft the resolution just to create a semi-quint committee.
Yeah.
With you know, up to a certain amount if council feels appropriate that we would seed them, so to speak, or that the council would authorize to seed them. And they can, and then we can take applications like we do for tree board and, and go from there.
I think that's a great idea. And then they could then be applying for some available funding for the event.
With, with.
Or fundraising or, or.
With council's interest, then I will take a stab at redrafting this more along those lines for your review going forward.
I would be in favor of that, but I'm one of several.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, I had similar sort of hesitations or questions about especially now worrying about the fourteen hundred is the amount of like, why, why is this money? Like, we can allocate this or we can, I mean, we live with, you know, a couple of dollars, but like it was set aside and dedicated for a specific purpose. Seems kind of like a pulling integrity if we can, let's do it and then find funding in a different source. So especially knowing that this isn't twenty twenty-six, so we have plenty of time to prep. Uh, and you know, any fund these events and then find, you know, matching funds and all this, you know, fundraising things that that committee can possibly handle. So I mean, I'm not gonna like be a stick in the mud over this either, but if the money was set aside for a purpose, we'll leave it there. I like the integrity of that. And knowing that it's not, you know, not thoroughly pursued either, like we can, we can backfill and find some funding for the quarter millennial is the word I would like to use as a proud millennial, uh, instead of semi quintcentennial.
I was just following the state's lead.
I did a lot of Googling about various annual bicentennial things here. Uh, so quarter million. So I think we can find other funding. I do want us eventually and so Mayor, maybe on that point we had more discussion, but I want a little more specificity about the rest of the mission or committee, whatever we call it, we'd be creating than this resolution offers. So maybe we can flag that so we can follow this point around right now, but like.
Okay.
And I'm open to any, you know, suggestions to shoot me an email, you know, with some ideas of what you'd like to see. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, my, my comment, I'm, I'm on the fence too. Uh, I, I see a committee that took the time and, and thinking, you know, thinking of different things in the future and yet you, you you weigh that in the, the tracking nightmare that could be that could happen in the future too. So that's, that's, that's my comment. Thank you.
Anybody else? Missy?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, okay, first I gotta say, I was really hoping the dollar amount was going to be one thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. Yeah, I mean, I, I would actually, uh, you know, chip in to bring it to that so that we can leave it for the, the tricentennial. Um, yeah, we indeed we can. Um, I, I follow in that line. So this is what a citizens group stated as their desired and it feels uh, just inappropriate for us to repurpose it for something else. I appreciate Shari's effort for looking for funding to celebrate for the um, semi, semi, what do we call it? The quarter millennial. Um, but I, I, I think there's got to be other ways to do that. And to me, it just feels wrong to um, to take this document and then turn it towards something else.
That's good.
I do have one other addition. Thank you for.
You do too.
Yeah. My thought is to carry it forward because within the document, it talks about time capsule and other his, historical pieces. And then that some of this funding could be used to restore an older building or something of that nature. Is there, could we contribute to that fund with both document and say twenty-five dollars a year that would then follow up until fifty years? So if you did it every year, then maybe the next person in the bench or the seat would know that this is every year the city puts in twenty-five dollars for this celebration and an item. Like a stoplight. I mean, those aren't even going to be around, I doubt. It'd be weird. There would be a lot of things that would be cool to put in there. Road rephone. Cell phones. I don't know. I don't know if that's possibility, but something that then could annually be documented and whoever, it's on the books. And the next person and the next person, the next person knows that you do it every year. It's like, what is that fund? Oh, this is what that is.
And that's a nice way to keep track of it as well.
Yeah. And then it, it contributes to that fund, not in a large capacity, but then at least it would grow a little bit and we would then maybe say our goal would be to get to whatever that would equate to.
I will certainly uh, consult with Shari about that. My, my initial thought to that, uh, Councilmember Cox or Council President Cox, excuse me, would be we could probably go that route as a city. It would be, be, be a separate resolution that would document that that was the intent to the council to contribute twenty-five dollars or whatever is appropriate per year plus an item and then a different resolution for this um, other celebration in conjunction with the state.
I think, and I'm being a little bit labor, this is real, this is a fascinating project to me and so bear with me. I remember years ago being told that don't ever take anything further that couldn't fit in a pizza box. So if you're gonna keep things for your kids or your kids don't want your stuff you're keeping, by the way. Get rid of it. They don't want. But if it doesn't fit in a pizza box, then you gotta let it go. And so I think we need to bear, if we're gonna move forward in something like that fashion, that you really think about it as a time capsule. It is something that can that's small enough, but so that the artifacts are, you know, that they would contribute to where we are in today's day and age, but that they would be worthwhile for future generations. But not big. People don't want to store stuff. Yeah. Maybe your tractor. Depends on if it's a toy or not. A big one. They probably want that.
Okay. Councilman huh?
Like a newspaper would be kind of cool. Just something showing like what's happening in this day and time.
I mean, Mayor, we even doing a picture from the same spot down Main Street. Would be really fun to show, you know, a, a progression of the heart of Lander. But we are definitely getting uh, into the weeds.
Yes, we are.
Well, I think, I'll just see in the weeds for a minute and then I'll pull back out. Um, if we put a newspaper in, I like the idea. Let's be very cautious about what the headlines are about the city action being taken that week. I want us to control what newspaper goes in. Uh, to the resolution though, if I could, for discussion and, and Rachel, if you're consideration. So if we turn this resolution or make some amendments here, so it is establishing the quarter millennial committee um, that will be contributing to and coordinating with the state efforts. Um, some of the specificity that I, I thought might be uh, that I would like to add or for us to debate adding would be around, you know, guidelines about how we want the money to be spent or spent by, you know, are we looking at promotions and events and sort of preservation? You know, do we not want to do events because other nonprofits can do that? We want to do, you know, like uh, these time capsule things. So some, some degree of how we're spending it, let's think about that. And then representation also. Um, I think it's important for this committee, looking at this uh, anniversary of, you know, I think what seventeen seventy-six and where Lander Wyoming was in seventeen seventy-six or who, right? We're celebrating the birth of our nation. Fabulous. Um, so glad to see that. And um, as we tie it to Wyoming, and I looked at like the statewide committees, ideas and things, you know, Wyoming in seventy seventy-six is not part of the nation. Uh, the U S nation is part of other nations, land ownership. So I think this is the kind of committee mayor, what I'd like to maybe not mandate, but encourage that we have representation of the eastern Shoshone, northern Arapaho. Like, maybe we put some guidelines in fact of who's on this committee. Um, just to be sensitive in fact that seventeen seventy-six was not um, here was not, it's on U S land.
Think we better look for a younger crowd than it's in here right now, so. That's fifty years down the road.
Well, no, Mayor, this is for the quarter millennial. So this is the, yeah, this semi quintcentennial.
You guys.
So how we spend the money, I wonder if there's more guidelines, specificity to that commission and who we want on that commission, uh, or at least like, uh, encourage representation on that commission or to the idea.
I will, I'll take a stab at that. I, I know that the resolution was fairly vague on how the money was to spent, just referencing the, the tricentennial guidelines because they had sort of detailed some of that out. Um, but I can certainly, where we're separating them out and doing something different, I think that that is well taken and I will take a stab and, and see what we can come up with.
And maybe some timelines too at that point, because they're, they'll be organizing for, coordinating with the states to celebrate in July twenty twenty-six. So if we're thinking ahead, which is great right now, but I mean, maybe we want to establish some degree of schedule or timeline of when we want it to be established by. Maybe that's two specific resolutions that we wanted to achieve by some point, a certain point, maybe not that, but sure, it just feels
so if any.
So maybe a little more structure.
If anyone has any ideas or thoughts about what they would like that to read, please email me. And I will gather people's thoughts.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Uh, let's move on. Discussion concerning proposed ordinance twenty, twenty-four dash seven penalties and change in violation for park rules. Michelle?
In twenty twenty-three, when ordinance twelve dash three dash three was reconsidered and, and passed, the focus really was on allowing for rules to be made by resolution so that they could be easily changed. What sort of I don't want to say it was overlooked, but wasn't changed was the, the violation, the penalty clause, for lack of a better word. And the way that that currently reads is that a violation of the ordinance and thus the park rules would constitute a misdemeanor and upon conviction would be punishable by a maximum fine of seven hundred and fifty dollars or imprisonment of not more than six months. So the discussion uh, arose about whether or not council really intended or city staff or the police department really intended for someone to be imprisoned up to six months for a violation of the type of items that were listed in the resolution of the park rules. It's a lot of money and from the court's perspective, you know, there's a different level of, of due process that comes with incarceration versus a forfeitable bond. And you have to advise people that they have the right to have an attorney, they have the right to have a jury trial and things of that nature. And, and the conversation really thought perhaps not having imprisonment as a violation for park rules would be appropriate. So in conversations with the police department and various other staff members, um, there was also an issue about, oh, well, how do people know what the park rules are and how do they know what we're not supposed to do and what, what happens if we do? We uh, I wanted to open the door to that conversation. And so it's already evolved since the one that I put in your packet and I, I did pass that out. So there's a discussion about um, section two would read in green, any person who violates this ordinance and or the park rules is set forth in resolutions thirteen twenty-one, thirteen twenty-two, thirteen twenty-three and thirteen twenty-seven, as they may be amended and they're located at landerwyoming.org backslash parksites. And then I would also suggest adding, and as posted on all the park restrooms or or whatever is appropriate, you know, in a place where people can find them, either at Dillon or they're at City Park or they're at Ambassador Park or wherever they may be. And uh, a conviction for a first offense would constitute a misdemeanor punishable by a maximum fine of seventy-five dollars. Be a second or subsequent offense could be punished by fines not to exceed seven hundred and fifty. So they could increase if a person continued to uh, to do the same offense. And that there would be a forfeitable bond scheduled that the Lander Municipal Court adopts and amends from time to time. So those are the, those are some suggestions, questions, thoughts, input?
Yes, I had a question. I know imprisonment isn't in this document, but if, if it wasn't the document and somebody was found guilty through the city court for six months, do we pay? This is a city?
Yes.
They're gonna pay.
Yes.
Eighty dollars. I don't know what the rate is, but.
It used to be a hundred and fifty.
What's the rate now?
Because we have an agreement with them.
We would pay, we would pay.
Fifty-five dollars a day.
Thank you.
We're trying to take that out. Yeah.
Sure, I did. Um, it's really boring after those comments. I think these are great changes. Yeah, I have no conservative changes I would suggest. I'm glad we're paying attention to this because it, it was excessively beautiful.
I am in favor of taking out imprisonment for sure. I do like the obviously second subsequent and, and so forth, that it would be a more significant fine, but yeah, it looks good.
Thank you.
Moving on to IDMC, youth services. Casey, Mary? Up here.
Used to being here in front of you guys. So um, hello, Casey Murray, Executive Director for Youth Services. Executive Director for Treatment Courts of Fremont County, although I'm not here for that. Um, I thank you just for inviting me. It sounds like you guys may have had some questions, so I'm here to answer whatever questions you have.
Questions? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you for coming. Please don't be nervous. We're not really as bad as John makes us sound. Um, there were a couple of questions. One was, and it comes at the discussion through the lack of funding from the city of Riverton. And so one of the things that we had talked about here too, and, and we've been a little bit more vigilant, I think, as a council, just given um, the nature of crime and juvenile interaction with crime, et cetera. And, and so I guess part of it is this, the council uh, feels and supports what youth services and juvenile justices are, are doing and appreciate that. I think sometimes we take for granted, and this might be because of historically of what exactly is going on and how that's managed, how our police department is managing them and how then we collaborate and work together, how um, you know, how then they filter through the system and the accountability piece and all of that. And so one, one suggestion that we have talked about is a, a report or like a, where you and uh, your staff can come and have an opportunity to discuss what's going on, your wins. And I think that's an important piece of it too. I think that anytime you're talking about criminal justice, specifically juvenile justice, anytime we can be talking about the wins, uh, you know, your recidivism rates, your program successes, your staff, what they're offering. I know that within the and then how we can better support what's going on for you. And I think one thing that I know just historically is the challenge of funding for programs. Juvenals tend to get a little bit more funding in the sense of there's a little bit more we're a little bit more compassionate when it comes to our youth that are committing crimes because we understand that home situation is involved, et cetera. But we also understand that, you know, our county struggles with addiction. And if, and if you don't know that, you just have to read county ten one day and you'll know. And so way, better ways that we as a governing body can support that, especially as it, as it comes to lack of funding. You see that the county commissioners are struggling to figure out what to do with their two million dollar shortage. And I know how that trick goes downhill. And pretty soon you're without a staff member or you're only doing bare bones and then you don't have, you can't even order pens or pencils and you know, those are, those are all real things that happen, especially within the county government. So I, I think that that's one way. Then the other way is really understanding what happens once a juvenile sided or that they I think that we take for granted that we just know that. I mean, I do, but I was in the system for twenty plus years. You know, I think that it's important for us to understand that, what the hoops they have to jump, jump through. We talked about some community service up here earlier. I'm sure you heard um, Councilwoman Stubble mentioned all the trash. That's a long walkable, it would be an easy one hour uh, pickup that somebody serving a precourt diversion could go pick up some trash and show a picture of it and have some pride with the community and rest, and restore the damage that's done. So I think collectively, we need, need more. We're very, always in support. I don't ever really hear any other communication other than like, maybe we just don't really know what's going on as a whole. And I think that's important. I think that when you talk about M R T, you sit up here as a council person, it's like, what's M R T? Well, that's moral recognition therapy. That's a cognitive behavioral therapy. It's been It's been suggested and researched, evidence-based. It means that if they do it with fidelity, they're gonna get something out of it. Oh, that's important to know. What do they learn in MRT? You know, those types of things. So I think just having a more candid conversation about what really goes on and, and so that we understand where our funds are going, so that when our constituents are like, well, why are you paying them that much and you only give the chamber however much, you know, that sort of, so it's better for us to be fully loaded, I guess, if you will. So, thank you, Mayor.
Sure. Councilwoman White?
Thank you, Mayor. And thanks for being here. Appreciate that. My question or, or suggestion, not so much about this particular agreement, I'm totally, totally down with that and appreciate efforts that you and your, your colleagues do for our youth is more a longer term and I, I would pose this probably between you and Mayor Richardson and the other, uh, municipal leaders here for an FKAG is to, to have a more standardized distribution of the funds. Um, my suggestion would be whether that's a three-year running average or five-year running average of, um, which, which communities are, are giving you business, basically, and then having the funding that way. Um, to me, that both seems, one, that we could better plan for. It seems like it would alleviate some of the budgeting concerns that come up for you. And then as a, since you are serving all of the youth of Fremont County, that we should be able to, um, you know, divide and conquer appropriately and, and each contribute equitably to that. So, and I, I think the, the process that would probably be between you and coming to FKAG or perhaps it's a different, you start there with the county commissioners, it's there ultimately, um, overseeing your, your office and services. But to me, that seems like an appropriate thing to pursue.
I mean, Mayor, on that point, um, I haven't seen the latest news on it, of city of Riverton reverse course. Are they funding this year?
So from what I have seen, I have not gotten a funding determination yet. So I have no idea what the actual funding will be. I know what they've proposed. Um, I will also just kind of in that say, we appreciate the city of Lander's support. Um, the way that the city of Lander funds us is a more stable funding. Uh, the way the city of Riverton looks at funding is we have to go against Oz, Special Olympics, Little League, anybody who asks the county or asks the city for money. So that's one of the processes we actually, uh, will be looking at over the next year to figure out if there's a better way to look at funding to help stabilize us a bit, uh, because our request last year versus what we got was not as much. And then this year is even less than what we got last year. That's proposed, what they've talked about in their work group, um, but we have yet to see a funding decision. And it's troubling.
And it's the three source funding or county, Lander, or Riverton right now?
Um, we, yes, county, Lander, Riverton. And then we also do receive some funding from the state through this, um, community services, community juvenile services board. Um, and there is an opportunity, there was another, uh, grant that the state did get through, um, the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention. And so we're just waiting for that to be written up to see how that can help, um, to be one of the funding sources. Our main funding source is actually the county. Um, we kind of looked at what our funding is for the, this coming up year, what we have for our budget. Um, and the money that we have coming in outside of, um, county funds is only $111,000. So 111, 291 and 50 cents. So not necessarily a ton. And a majority of that does go to our staff costs. Um, but then the other things we would rather spend our money on our, on our clients, on the juveniles and the families that we serve. And so we are pretty bare bones. So when council member Cock talked about, uh, pens, pencils, things like that, those are things that we try to dig in the supply room or wait for somebody to put it out on the street in the county hallway of like, oh, hey, you don't need those pr- plastic page protectors? We do. We'll take them. So.
Well, I'm glad, Mayor, I managed to hear of your, um, uh, responsibility of what your funds you're stewarding and making sure they're going to your clients and taking care of your staff. But I, I also don't like hearing that. It sounds like you're sort of scripting as well. So hopefully we can, um, the conversation on more stable sources of funding is, will be an important one. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
I do have a question.
Yeah, I had one too. I think what would help is, and we used to get it all the time, is quarterly reporting from you guys coming in to tell us what's going on. It'd be student cheer helping. And it gives us an idea where the funding's going and how you're doing. So, and how many kids in Lander you're helping versus kids in Riverton or the ones off the reservation. It's gonna break it down. So we understand what your funding source is, or put in. What we need to do is counsel to help fix it.
And that's easy for us to do. I think part of it will also be if there's any specific things that you want to hear. Um, sometimes I talk about just the trends that we see in citations, um, just to kind of give you an idea of kind of what ends up coming to us. Um, there are cases that obviously bypass us completely, but sometimes those things can be helpful, I think, also in just seeing kind of what's happening within schools. When we have periods of time where there's lots of fighting versus, you know, we always have substance abuse citations, but sometimes we see an increase in fighting and those kind of things.
Do you have just a follow-up quickly on budget? I think that, I know this was asked before, what is your total budget for just youth services? I mean, you get 35, or requesting 35,000 from the city, but what is your total expenditure budget for this, for this year? So, um, the request for this year is 478,2942. So that's expenditures. So of that, we're contributing 35,000, which, I mean, I know that when Hattie Calvert was here giving us the figures, it's approximately 25% of the caseload of the total county caseload that Lander contributes to. It seemed like approximately. So 75% Riverton, 25% total in Lander.
So if I, I was gonna say I did bring kind of the city of Riverton data, the same, just verifying we've got the same time periods. Um, so our time periods are a little bit different just because of when their request was asked versus when, um, we needed to provide the information to you guys. So for the city of Riverton, from 3/24/23 to 3/25/24, um, the city of Riverton had 256 citations, where the city of Lander from 4/30/23 to 5/1 of 24 was 132 citations.
And I think that's one thing that, uh, the struggle, and you made a really good point of some sustainability process of funding and how that could be. And, and historically, that used to be a little different. Riverton would contribute that, their portion, which would offset. So it would be like Lander would be 15,000 and, uh, Riverton would be a considerable amount more. And there were some JBIG funding that went into that and that was historical and not necessary for discussion. But it would be interesting with that third-party request from the city of Riverton, you're right, that that is not state, that's not a stable request because they're taking a pool of funds that they have to distribute to all of these entities. And you're, you're providing a service that's much different. Um, we couldn't, as a city, I mean, we couldn't do juvenile probation agent for $35,000 here. That would be, there'd be no way. So it is a good bang for our buck. And we know that you have a iso- I mean, you have a specific person that's doing city of Lander juvenile probation. It's not like we're sharing that person from Riverton. That's, is that's correct still?
That is correct, yes.
So we're getting, you know, a person as well as additional resources.
Okay.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Council President Cox. I think that's helpful framing to hear about what, what our contribution gets as opposed to if we were paying for it as well. Um, on the reporting there, I was curious because the agreement as it stands right now spells out quarterly reporting, but just has it coming, the report comes to the city. Um, I read that as assuming it goes to city staff, like the chief. Yep, that's great. Um, and Mayor, I wasn't sure if I was hearing, you suggest that perhaps youth services comes present to us. I'm of two minds on that because I, I do agree that awareness ideally leads to greater, uh, informed decision-making, possibly advocates, right? Like we, oh, this is what we're paying for. This is why it's so important. Perhaps that would help with the unstable funding. I don't know. Um, however, hearing how careful you are with your budget and your staff time, a quarterly report of, a presentation does would be staff time taken away from clients, uh, on a, on a fairly streamlined and, you know, efficient, what I'm hearing, group. So I wonder if, Mayor, instead of having a, I mean, I would always welcome a presentation if you wanted to, but if that felt like onerous for your staff line, that you're spending less time on a staffer with clients because they have to prep to come to us, uh, perhaps Chief, you could, uh, be a, um, a report, you could get that quarterly report and bring it to us as part of your dates. And if you think it was important to have the public presentation where we're, you know, press is covering it, we're becoming greater informed advocates, I wouldn't argue against it either, but, but I'd be cautionary about, uh, pulling staff time away from the important mission you have.
Thanks, Mayor. I think on that, um, I think that that's a valuable distinction. Um, but I also think that it's important. I think it's important that we continue to talk about kind of what's going on within our community. And so for me, those are things that are important is making sure, um, not just, um, the leadership in the, you know, the city council knows, but also that the people of the city of Lander also know kind of what's happening, what's happening in their community, and that they have an opportunity as well to kind of hear all of that and then put questions together if they've got questions for us. Because, um, while we do a really great job at the work we do, um, I also believe that we're only as good as what we know. And so there might be, sometimes there's resources we don't know about or connections that we don't always get a chance to make. And so I think that's a really great way to make those connections and also for us to be visible. Because, um, one of the things that I heard you talk about was about representation. And so I think it's important to just make sure that that also is part of the awareness is that there are a lot of kids that get in trouble. It's not just a certain subsection of, of kids. Um, and that this problem impacts the entire community because it impacts people who don't have children, impacts people with grandchildren. So I think it's just good to be there. So I'm more than willing to come and give quarterly reports and be available to answer questions and, um, perfectly fine for me.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, thank you. That helped clear up a lot of.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Grace? Anything else? All right. Thank you, guys, very much.